Just the same, it's one more thing.
I would like to not do that. My daughter's birthday party was supposed to be in the backyard.
Relocate.
There were four holes in the ground that were four different messes. We got one of them.
Good evening. Good evening. One more time. Good evening.
There you go.
Good evening. I feel like it was louder earlier. Good evening, everyone. It's Wednesday, September 4th, 2024. At 6:30 PM, I'm going to call the meeting of the school committee to order. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. The meeting will be broadcast live through the local access cable channel and on the public access Facebook page and will be found on Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by open meeting law. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please rise.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone in the public who has a public comment? I'll open it up to a public comment from the board. Mr. Scullbrini.
I just wanted to make a quick public comment in response to comments that have been made previously about the idea of having a more informal setting for the school committee. And looking through the public meeting law, I do not think it is possible to make it work. I think that the public meeting law triggers when, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, three of us are in any one spot, given the current number of people on the board. And so it would basically be impossible for us to have a mixer where we are not an official meeting, but still have a significant participation from board members. So I like the idea. I think the public meeting law in Massachusetts is onerous, but unfortunately, we don't get to pick the loss. We just have to follow. So that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else for a public comment? All right, thank you. Moving on, next item on the agenda is the Chair's Report. So I'll start off by apologizing. It's been a long summer and this is actually my first Chair's Report, so it's a little longer. I promise the next ones will be shorter. This summer, I was able to attend a Zoom with the new primary school principal, as well as Ms. Brzowski and another parent. It was good to meet the new primary school principal. Also, Sybil Kaufman, a frequent face at our meetings, reached out over the summer with interest in starting a nonprofit educational foundation called LEAF and was also looking for a chance to present at a school committee meeting in the fall, and it just happened to be also tonight. Over the summer, I also met with Rep. Scarsdale, two members of the Department of Education and surrounding community leaders to discuss transportation issues, minimum required contributions, hold harmless, effectiveness of the foundation formula in meeting towns' needs, inflation and the 4.5% cap on the Student Opportunity Act, which has severely impacted towns over the last few years with so much high inflation. The meetings really laid a groundwork for achieving fundamental change we need in the funding formulas. And in future meetings, we hope to add more minimum aid districts helping outside of Rep. Scarsdale's district. Other Lunenburg members that attended was Mandy Gilman from the PTO, Chris Minard of the Finance, Caesar Nuzzolo of the Select Board, and Dr. Burnham and Dr. Gilson from the school. We await more feedback from Rep. Scarsdale on future meetings and building more of a cohesive group of districts that have these concerns over the funding formula. The Finance Committee reached out and there was concerns. The former town manager reached out and said that there was some updates and errors on the committee members' terms. Tiffany Tavares' term should end in June 30th, 2024. Jean Russell's term should end June 30th, 2025. The former town manager also reached out and stated that the state issued a new IGR this spring on smart growth reimbursement, coincidentally, not long after we learned that we were no longer eligible for this funding and that she wanted to put on everyone's radar. The deadlines are coming up as soon as September 1st with the submittal by September 15th, and we could be eligible again for smart growth funding in FY '25, so the town should still apply. She also sent a budget timeline, some of the highlights. This is for 2025, but February 13th, 2025, the town manager's preliminary budget presentation. February 20th, 2025 would be the Council on Aging and Library. The February 27th was Information Technology and Police. March 6th was DPW and Facilities. March 13th would be FIRE in Lunenburg Public Schools. March 19th would be Administration, Unclassified Debt Service and MONI Tech. And March 20th would be Public Access Committee, SUER and other monied articles. And then on March 27th would be the FY 2026 Budget Public Hearing and Vote on Recommendations. Ms. Arshinbo forwarded a Mass School Building Authority email that they're having a competition for students to reimagine the MSBA logo. So I sent that along to Dr. Burnham and she's going to send it out to the students who'd like to participate. It opens September 16th, 2024, and the contest welcomes all 10th, 11th, 12th grade students attending Massachusetts Public School. The school committee also received a letter from Chief Gamel, and he forwarded the letter to us about the SRO program and how it's crucial to building relationships and trust within the school community. The letter demonstrates just how impactful and life-changing this program is, and the addition of Hank has been a blessing, but is truly the combination of both Officer McNamara and Hank. And he looks forward to our continued partnership and growth of the SRO program. And I would like to read that letter into the public record for the school committee. "To whom it may concern, my name is Winter Snow, and I am currently going into my senior year at Bridgewater State University studying criminal justice. If you would ask me in high school what I wanted to major in, it sure wouldn't have been criminal justice. Being an officer had never crossed my mind. That was never a career I was remotely interested in. It all changed in 2019. Moving schools as a junior in high school is never an easy transition, but being in the 5% of minority in my new town was a new kind of challenge. Coming into Lunenburg High, I had no friends. I knew no one. This is not a dramatization. I wouldn't go eat in the lunchroom. I'd instead hang out with the librarian in the library. Over time, I'd see an officer pass with his dopey smile from ear to ear, and I wouldn't pay him any mind, but in his hand was a lead that led to an adorable brown ball of love. At first, I had no interest in talking to the officer that was attached to Hank. I visited the office to solely see the dog that was just so friendly and soft that I couldn't stay away from him. My love for Hank grew even though he was technically a police officer, and eventually my overall disdain for police officers lifted as I got to know Brad as well. I'm not saying the man is amazing, but he's pretty close to it. Hank, the adorable lab, played his role well. He calmed me down on rough days, gave me a reason to go relax in the office, and even after my mom had passed and was bait, because waiting was Brad, as always, there with an open door and a smile on his face. Without these two officers in my school, I don't know what I would have done. The last two years of high school were the worst in my life so far. If Hank hadn't coerced me into the office, I would have never had a conversation with Brad to think a dog changed the course of my life. Hank warmed me up to the police and Brad made me want to become one. Dogs are more than a cute fluffy companion, they're a bridge of connection. I'm graduating in May 2025 and plan to join the Boston Police Department. Thank you, Brad, and most importantly, thank you, Hank. Sincerely, Winter Snow." It's letters like those that we received that really shows the great connection between the police and the schools and the great resource officer that we have and the great resource officer K9 that we have. Additionally, our letter concerning excess Lunenburg Chapter 70 funds was sent to the Select Board, the Finance and the interim town manager on Wednesday, August 14th. On September 26th, the Second Annual Town of Lunenburg Official Meet and Greet will take place from 5:30 to 8:30 at Low Places Ranch. And the start of the school year was last week and Kindergarteners were in this week. The school is full now. Welcome back, everyone, and I'm wishing everyone a safe and fun year of learning and growth. And that is my report. Next item on the agenda is to review and approve minutes. We have regular session minutes from June 26th and July 25th. There were people absent at each of those meetings, so it would be good if we could take those separately. Say, do we have any questions or concerns about the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes for June 26th, 2024?
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes from June 26th? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I'll abstain.
Move to approve the minutes for July 25th, 2024?
Second.
The motion is to approve the July 25th minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
I think I was out.
Yeah. And one abstention. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to review and approve line item transfers and warrants?
No line item transfers this evening.
And we have from August 5th to August 22nd, $463,413.80 for the warrants. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report.
Good evening, everyone. An update on transportation at this time. There are no students awaiting assignment to a bus, and our staff at Central Office have been able to answer any questions or concerns for any parents, so there are no outstanding issues at this time. Overall, we've had a good start to the school year. Things went very smoothly for the staff return last Monday. Opening day for grades 1 through 12 on Tuesday last week went very well. And opening day for our pre-K and kindergarten this week, yesterday, went very well. Fall athletic season as of this evening is officially underway with the first competition for varsity field hockey. Information relative to the calendar year for our PACSEL meetings. This year, PACSEL meetings will be held on the first Thursday each month and will be a combination of in-person and Zoom meetings. PTO will be meeting next Monday, September 9th, at 7:00 PM at the Middle High School, and new members are always welcome to join the PTO. Fall benchmark assessments, our iReady fall benchmark assessments will be administered again this year, grades K through 8. However, this year, we will administer iReady assessments in grade 8 in September and in February. No end-of-year assessment, given all of the assessments that grade 8 has to complete for the state. iReady reading assessments will be conducted September 12th and 13th. iReady math assessments will be conducted September 18th and 19th. The Spring 2024 MCAS results typically by this time have been released, embargoed. In other words, we can't share information about the results with the public, but at this time, we still do not have access to the full data release. We're understanding that potentially roundabout September 23rd, we might see the data, and that gives us then access to run different reports through the state platform. School Picture Day, September 11th, Turkey Hill Elementary School. September 17th, the middle school. September 18th, the high school. And September 19th and 20th, school pictures will be taken at the primary school. Open houses, tomorrow night, September 5th, is the middle school open house. September 12th will be the high school open house. September 18th, Turkey Hill. And September 19th at the primary school. One other reminder for September, September 27th is an early release day for students for professional development for our staff. I also like to give everybody an update relative to our next school committee meeting. Our next school committee meeting is also slated for September 18th, the same evening as the Turkey Hill Elementary Open House. That said, we have a couple of options that we can discuss this evening relative to that meeting. Additionally, due to the late release of MCAS data, I'm wondering if we could adjust our schedule, our meeting schedule, to present action plans, my goals, which are also likely going to be tied to district-wide goals, and school improvement plans to the second meeting in October. Usually, we take those up at the first meeting in October. In order for us to get a look at the data and assess what the goals should be designed to target, I can't guarantee that we'll even be able to analyze the data by October 2nd and have any analysis for the committee in advance of that meeting. So that's something that we can discuss as well. For everyone's convenience, because it's a lot of information to take in just verbally. Our current meeting schedule would be for September 18th, October 2nd, and October 16th. Together with Liz Peterson, we keep a running agenda of potential topics for each of our agendas, and we had several placeholders for these upcoming meetings. We anticipated a fall athletics report on the 18th and quarterly reports, including the FY '25 budget, personnel, Keystone Collaborative, as well as a placeholder for some continued discussion on school committee goals, as well as FY '26 budget priorities for the committee. On October 2nd, a monthly facilities and grounds report, an update on strategy action plans, school improvement plans, my goals, again, which are also district-wide goals potentially, and also tied to school improvement plans, and again, a placeholder for some continued discussion on school committee goals and FY '26 budget priorities. And then October 16th, we are hopeful that we will have an FY '24 end-of-year report for you, as well as our typical MCAS and iReady fall benchmark assessment report. And we had planned to provide an update on the transition to the new IEP implementation and the use of PowerSchool as the software platform for our IEPs this year. So you can see on the 18th, a lot of it is just reports, not a lot of discussion-based topics. The Turkey Hill Open House is due to wrap up at about 7:00 PM. There are several members of the committee that have students that may wish to attend that open house. So it's possible where that meeting would be located at the middle high school, it's possible that following the wrap of the open house at Turkey Hill, members could then walk up to the middle high school and we could potentially have a meeting start at 7:15 or 7:30. Again, the agenda, what we know of an agenda right now is not a lengthy discussion-based agenda, so that's a possibility. It's also a possibility, if you look at the next sheet, that we could potentially cancel the meeting on the 18th and shuffle some of the topics that would have been on the agenda for the 18th and shift some of the items that would have been on the October 2nd agenda off to the October 16th. So again, whatever the wish of the committee is, I didn't know if other members of the committee with no children at Turkey Hill might also be interested in attending open houses for any of our schools. So those are some possibilities for consideration.
So I'd like to open it up to the committee to hear some feedback. I will tell you my situation. I do have a child at Turkey Hill, but I also, I have parent-teacher conferences at my work, so I will not be even available until 8 o'clock that evening. And I would be joining in Zoom too if we do have a meeting. Brzowski?
I also have a child at Turkey Hill and was planning on coming to that meeting late and then realized, you know, there's three of us in that situation, so forum would be an issue. I'd rather not just cancel a month at the beginning of school. Seems a really long time to go without a school committee meeting, so pushing it to 7:30 and having an abbreviated meeting seems a good solution.
Thank you. Mr. Scullbrini?
I'm in favor of making all of the meetings shorter. So what if we did the reports as written reports and had them submitted?
That's our plan.
Okay. Because I don't need to know what the status of the elevator is in person.
Nope.
I could figure that out by reading it. So if we could do that, I don't really have a preference about extra meetings or me starting meetings late. I just concerned that I would be imposing something that is good for me on other people.
Thank you. Ms. Arshinbo?
I'm flexible anyway. It doesn't matter to me. I don't mind starting a meeting later if that will keep the other meeting shorter, knowing that some of us have that preference. It doesn't make a difference to me. I can go either way.
Mr. Bierma?
I agree with Mrs. Arshinbo. I don't have a strong opinion either way. One thought of an abbreviated meeting and doing it at Turkey Hill and announcing on the front end that the thing is going to be, there's going to be a school committee meeting at the end of it. So parents might be intending, you know?
The challenge there is that we would have to take over a space that they are likely using for the open house. I know that they have a meeting for 5th grade parents about the nature's classroom trip.
Oh, what time is that?
Is that after the open house?
Because we lose to that, just to be clear.
Yeah, two of us are. Two of us are in that, well.
It would be a short walk over to the high school.
What time is the nature's classroom meeting?
I don't know exactly what time, but I think it's after the 6 o'clock time. I think that they're looking to target 3 and 4 from 5 to 6, and then grade 5, more so at 6 o'clock till 7:00.
It sounds like the will of the committee would be to keep the September 18th meeting, but start it at a later time.
If we can.
Yeah. And we can see Dr. Turkey Hill kind of get a good estimate of when the parents would be able to leave, get to the high school, and we'll set the time on that.
Yep. Thoughts on shifting goals, strategy, and school improvement plans to the October 16th meeting, when we will actually have had a chance to get some analysis of the MCAS data to inform our goal development?
Does the MCAS, I mean, obviously, I'm sure there's going to be a student achievement-related goal, but does the MCAS drive other goals outside of the student achievement?
It could inform the goal and the student learning goal could also potentially inform a professional practice goal.
Do we know why there's a delay?
I think it's because they're changing from the Edwin platform where they archive all that data and we run reports from that platform. They're transitioning to a different platform, and I think that that's part of the delay.
But you guys are also going to have to learn how to run reports too? Okay. So we should keep that in mind too.
Yeah. And typically, there's a little bit of lag time between when schools get access to the data and when they publicly release the data, and we're understanding that there may be literally a couple of days between the time we get a first look at the data and the public gets a look at our data. So that is not typical. Usually, we have a chance to dig in on our data a little bit before everyone in the public is looking at it as well.
Ms. Arshinbo?
So then, if that should be moved regardless, that bottom bullet, continued discussion on school committee goals and FY '26 budget priorities, would both of those things, I see you have them in both, both meetings on that?
Right, because I have, I keep things on the list as a placeholder.
Right.
In case there's continuation or we have to bump a discussion because other things came up that have to get onto an agenda.
So we could be looking at that September 18th meeting as being fall athletics, quarterly reports, budget, personnel, and the Keystone Collaborative. That could be all that's on that particular. Those are pretty quick things.
They are very quick.
You know, we could be looking at a half an hour there.
Right.
But to Laura's point, the beginning of the school year to skip the second meeting, because you don't know what could possibly come up.
You could have something pop up. You could have people available for public conferences.
Yeah, people may want to say something.
I also think, you know, I believe, you know, last year, because we were on a two-year cycle with the superintendent, the school committee goals were, you know, were discussed on a separate cycle. I'm not, I'm not sure that they have to be as linked as we seem to have them linked on this, right?
Right, I think you can set your goals at any point, but to start to have some discussion about what your goals might, if you have ideas around what?
Yeah.
The facilities and grounds report is switching to a monthly format.
There'll be a monthly report at the first meeting every month.
Yeah, if we can pull it off, and I would leave it to your discretion, Mr. Chairman.
If the vice chair is willing to lead the meeting.
I got it. We'll make it fast.
If you're still at 8, I'll be on there at 8.
My goal is to finish before 8. You can do it.
I'm going to remind Mr. Scullbrini again, our shortest meetings are the ones you are not at.
This is true.
Dr. Burnham, did you have anything else?
No, I think that's it. I think pending what happens with first read policies this evening, second read and third read will go on to this list as well.
Oh, that'll help too. Okay.
Yeah, thank you. That's great. That's a great idea. Next item on the agenda is the presentation by LEAF. I will invite Sybil Kaufman and Tom Littlepage up.
Should we sit at this table and use?
I think you need a microphone.
You need the microphone.
Thank you.
It's me, isn't it? Feedback, feedback.
I'll make it work.
So can you guys, Superintendent Burnham, can you project the presentation and I'll narrate? Okay. Thank you for having me tonight while we get that queued up. We're really excited. I'm here to represent a group of three residents and friends, colleagues, who have been brainstorming about various ways to support our schools in addition to all the wonderful ways that our town has come together just historically and over the last few months and years to support the, when we say the schools, I feel like that encompasses a really broad thing, but you know, we are keeping our kids in mind first. I know that each of you thinks about that, and that's why you're serving here. So for us, it was, you know, is there an untapped way that we can engage our community to fill a gap and fill a need and to serve our kids better? So I see it's up. Thank you. And we also want to introduce ourselves to the public. So first, a lot of people, us included, when we were starting to brainstorm ways to support, hadn't heard about an education foundation, weren't sure what an ed foundation was. So I'll give a little definition and background. An ed foundation is a nonprofit organization that's meant to enhance academic excellence by connecting corporate and private sector funds, so philanthropic contributions directly to educators who are looking to implement innovative learning opportunities for K-12 students. So getting monies from the community, straight to teachers, into our classrooms to help our kids. It's directed by a board of volunteers, and we hope and other ed foundations in our state. It's directed by a board of volunteers, and we hope and other ed foundations in our state see it as an entry point for people or groups who may not identify as a parent or a guardian or a teacher, people who are typically affiliated with other organizations. It's an entry point to get them connected to the schools. Great, next slide, please. So why do we think an ed foundation is the best choice for our group to start? We think that teacher support and it'll be a teacher support and benefit that's not available in other districts, so it'll potentially be a plus when we're looking for new employees for the district. It positively augments morale, so if our teachers and our administrators know that the community is behind them, hopefully that makes them feel good. It shares the fundraising burden collaboratively with the PTO and other organizations like sports boosters or those kind of guys. It creates a funding channel for previously unaffiliated donors, so we're really hoping to tap community members who may be disengaged, disenchanted, not just with the school district or the town, but in general. And it raises expectations for our teachers, so, you know, what is possible in their classrooms? We really want them to think outside the box and know that we, as the community, want that for them, too. We think that this is a positive thing. It'll help motivate our neighbors to think really creatively about how we can support students. And we really want it to be all-inclusive, a Big Ten operation, to invite all citizens and businesses regardless of their affiliation to join us. So we really want to focus on that educator learner initiative, like really on that direct, we're not talking about big curriculum decisions, things that Superintendent Burnham is, you know, putting a lot of effort, that you all are putting a lot of your time and effort into making sure are optimized for the district. We want to be able to give directly into the classroom. We want to focus our solicitation on large corporate and philanthropic gifts, so we're not talking about little fundraisers or, you know, small operations. We're thinking really large scale. We're thinking big. We're thinking about presentations to larger operations. This keeps fundraising efforts focused on one fund for one purpose. There are a lot of ed foundations in our state, and we'll see some examples in a second, that have multiple committees and multiple funds that go to different kinds of things. When we're starting out, we want to keep expectations reasonable. We want to ask anyone who's interested in this operation, since it's a foundational year or in the next couple of years, to contribute to one fund. And that one fund would then grant monies to individual educators for individual projects. So one fund for one purpose, and that's getting money directly to teachers. So we think the operating budget will be maintained by volunteer administrative and community board members, and I'll talk a little bit more about the details that we think might work in a minute. So next slide. These are just a few of our peers in the state of Massachusetts. Fun fact is that the first ed foundation founded in the state of Massachusetts was in Brookline, and it was in direct response to the passing of Prop two and a half. So that community came together, founded an ed nonprofit. While we were doing research, we found so many ed nonprofits in other states, and it turns out that my own home district in San Antonio, Texas, actually, it's Converse, Texas, which is a suburb, has a nonprofit that now supports its school district, which didn't happen when I was growing up. But inflation, budgets, et cetera, et cetera, the community knew that it needed to come together in a different way. And it turns out, a lot of big districts in Texas are doing this as well, so I was proud to learn that. So we're in good company. Next slide, please. Why now? So we figure this is a good time. We have been brainstorming for the last couple of years, like thinking about the override. You know, we don't want this message to get confused with all the hard work that people are doing to talk to state funding sources, to get money from other sources. We really want this to be a separate conversation. So the budget's set for our district, the override passed, but we feel like people are still listening, and there's an engagement in our community, and there are a lot of us who want to kind of ride this wave of positivity and helpfulness. So that's why we're talking about this now. So here's what we came up with. Leaf, it's a great acronym. Everybody loves a good acronym. The Lunenburg Education Accelerator Foundation. And our mission would be to be a citizen-led nonprofit catalyst that enhances academic excellence in Lunenburg schools by connecting corporate and private sector funds, words that I already said. But to be specific, we really want the grants to support creative curricular development beyond the scope of the typical school budget, so it's augmenting what we already have. Creative ideas reflect alternative approaches to typical instruction and incorporate tools or methodologies not currently available in our classrooms. We'll see some examples of that in a second. And I'm speaking in future tense in a lot of cases because this is still an idea we haven't incorporated into an LLC and then a 501(c)(3), so we're talking about what is still an idea. We're still building. This is very foundational. So here's an idea of what could be funded by this foundation. Innovative academically-related projects that are outside the scope of the curricular development and plan for the district. Enrichment opportunities that are above and beyond what's average. And then single teacher slash classroom initiatives to larger-scale multi-teacher projects. So, you know, we see a future where if we are getting enough funds, enough philanthropic support, that this could be not only classroom, you know, us to direct to teachers, but there could be teacher collaboratives, where it's by grade, by school, the whole district. There's room to grow. So all of you will have copies of this presentation. A lot of the links in the next couple of slides, these are hyperlink to other ed foundations and some samples of projects that they've done. A few of us have favorites. There's a lot of robots, a lot of purchasing of robots, purchasing of cooking kits. I think Tom's favorite is the nature Wi-Fi. A teacher got a grant to install Wi-Fi on a nature hike so that kids could scan a QR code or do experiments while they're out on the nature hike. Podcast studios, et cetera. So it really runs the gamut. We're looking at infinite possibilities, but of course, we want to focus in our scope of work, so when we create bylaws, a grants committee would guide the development of the grants criteria. That would be very specific and very easy and accessible for educators to understand what would and would not be funded. All right, so that's the couple. I've also included some links to videos that you're welcome to watch at a different time. So what we're thinking would not be funded, travel for individuals, at least in this foundational time, we really don't want to get into that. As I understand, there's also some regulations around, you know, travel for teachers and students, and so we just don't want to touch that until we're a little bit more established. Items that would be expressly funded within the school budget, so anything that's got its own line item. School curriculum or professional development, again, that's just something that we don't want to touch in this foundational time because it's a little tricky. For freshmen, we don't want people to buy cookies and juice for a party or, you know, decorate an event, that kind of thing. Really want to focus on direct-to-student service by the way of innovative education. Okay, so next slide. This sort of outlines the difference between an ed foundation and a parent teacher organization or association. So we, we want to highlight all the good work that the PTO does. They're a super important part of our community. One of the things we've listed here is that they have a myriad of events, dances, cruise night, teacher appreciation, et cetera. This organization would not be events-based at all. We're not looking to have any kind of competition whatsoever. We're really looking to have this grants program in place, and that's it. Once the grants are implemented, it would be lovely to have one event every year to showcase the student achievement that those grants were able to fund so that our donors could see the outcome. But that's what we're thinking. So the foundation would really target, as I said, people who weren't already engaged or wouldn't be a target audience for that PTO. We would have a fund application that's direct to educators. And I don't need to read this slide to you, but for those listening, actually, and those who might watch the, the meeting later, the foundation would not have any policy influence either, so we wouldn't endorse any kind of political action for the town. And, yeah, I think that's pretty much, that's the sum of it. So one quote that we found in, in talking to peers in other communities was someone said, "Another organization raising awareness for what schools need can only be helpful." And that's very much how we feel. We want this to be a very collaborative, transparent, cooperative process. We've worked really hard to do some research, put that together for everyone so that you know that we're taking this seriously. And now that this is public, we're really happy to take our egos out of it and take everybody's feedback and make this work for everyone. So just a couple last things. I've already kind of touched on what ed foundations do. One thing that's important on this slide is, again, the collaboration so that we can fundraise differently, so that we can fill gaps, not that we can compete with anyone else. And that we would construct the board, which we're in the process of doing, we're recruiting other people to, to join us in leadership to help found this organization. We want to create that board in a way that best suits Lunenburg. So kind of breeze through the next one, which is philanthropic scope. I forgot my water, so I'm trying, tripping on my words. So we're focused in on this philanthropic scope in terms of these four pathways. We want to cultivate our donors. We want to provide them incentives. So you give us money, we'll help connect you to other engaged organizations in the community. We'll showcase your contact information and logo in various ways. It offers a significant tax deduction, et cetera, so, and plus, it's the right thing to do. So good incentives. We want to focus our philanthropy on retention, so bringing people into the fold and then keeping them there. And to me, this kind of networking is something that small communities are really good at, so once you get somebody involved, they're really likely to pass that on, and it just works out well for everyone. And then we hope to expand. I've talked a lot about foundational efforts, and that's what we're focused on now, but we, of course, have hope for the future and the day when we'll be like someplace like Brookline and have multiple foundation committees that are looking at SEL grants versus math grants versus science and tech. So here's a proposed organizational chart. We'll have a typical leadership board, an executive board with a president, vice president, et cetera. But we also love representatives from the various ed-related organizations already in town. So for example, from the superintendent's office, either Dr. Burnham or a designee. From this committee, either a selected member or a designee, you know, that kind of thing, so that your voice is part of those grant decisions. One good example of why that's important that other ed foundations have talked us about is, you know, if in the grants reviewing process, an application checks all the boxes, but we are not educators nor policymakers, we may not understand the implications. Tom, can you think of a good example of something that, oh, the perk bench? So one application to a peer organization asked for a buddy bench, so funds to construct a buddy bench. And it kind of hit all the grant criteria, but somebody from the district said, you know, actually, that's more of like a social emotional effort. It's not focused in the classroom. And they were, they kind of rethought what that might mean. So it's really good to have this kind of input. Yes, so, and also input from PTO so that we're not overlapping or so that we can overlap if we need to. Say somebody put in a grant application for something really awesome, and it just needs a little bit extra funds, maybe we can collaborate on that. And then obviously, community members at large, so we would love to get help from our neighbors. And we would sit on three different committees, a grants committee, donor relations, and the gala committee. Like I said, I think it's important to keep an eye on outcome and being able to clearly report that outcome to our donors. So we have a ambitious timeline here, which we're still technically on track to do. We'd like to incorporate as a nonprofit organization this October. We'd like to get our marketing materials up and running this fall. Inaugural fundraising campaign, the fall through the spring. So we're really looking to award grants by twenty-five, twenty-six. We want to do this diligently. We want to do it right. Want to get all of our ducks in a row. So we think that this is the best way forward for us. So again, let's do this. I think this is a really positive opportunity. I'm sure that this plan is in no way perfect, and we're really looking forward to your feedback. At the moment, we are recruiting board members. We have several interested parties, so we're screening candidates, getting folks together. Our first board meeting to review and discuss bylaws will be on the twenty-sixth of this month. And I have some brochures for leave-behinds if you guys are interested in having a printout or anything like that. So I'm looking for your support. We're looking for your support, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Sybil. I will open it up to the committee. What questions, concerns, feedback do you have? Ms. Archibald?
Yeah, I can jump in. Thank you. Thank you for putting your energy and your thoughtfulness and your organization into something positive like this. I think this could be very, very helpful. The only, the only feedback I have, and you have alluded to it, so, is just to make sure that when things go through the group, they also go through Dr. Burnham, so that something that doesn't already exist isn't being asked for, or something that for some reason that you don't realize turns into a major nightmare. But I, I think your, your research is very well done. Obviously, this has been done elsewhere, and I thank you for your time and effort.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My only concern, and it also is a thank you, is the amount of time and effort this takes from volunteers. This is, like, this is, this is a lot of work.
Can I jump in? Can I jump in, Laura? Yeah, I, I think this is one of the reasons that we, we feel really strongly about this is it gives us an outlet to do things we're good at. So it's really hard for me to sit here and not raise my hand and ask questions. I'm not as, I, I don't think I'd be as good at your job as you are. I think you all are where your strengths are, and this is where our strengths are. So I think this offers an opportunity for people like me who have never been able, who, have never been able to chaperone a field trip or help with a library fair because I'm working during the day. And so if I can put in some effort into things I'm good at, like marketing and fundraising at night and on the weekends, I would love to do that. Thanks.
For channeling your passion into action.
Mr. Bearden?
Well, I echo the, the comments of my other colleagues, and we had spoken briefly on the phone a month or two ago about this, and, you know, I, I think my, my only concern is much the same as Ms. Brzezowsky's, is we have a lot going on in Lunenburg. We have a lot of committees. We have a lot of active people, but not enough. And so whatever we can do to encourage people to be active and get organized, like, I think that's a good time, a good thing, but there's also like the, okay, at what point do we get to a saturation point? And, and I was involved in still, you know, occasionally involved with the skateboard project, skateboard park project, and.
I sound still waiting on that.
Yeah, it's coming, it's coming. But, you know, I got to tell you, I mean, part of the, part of the challenge has been, number one, everything costs more than you thought it did. But that's the biggest one. But the second one is, is that, you know, that thing is, we, we've publicized the big donations, but it's really been the small donations because there haven't been a ton of big donations. They're hard to get. And in particularly if you're not experienced in, in that kind of fundraising. And I understand that, you know, you're going to bring in you and, and you're going to bring in like-minded people who have similar experience and, and know how to go about doing that. And to whatever extent we can harness that, that's awesome. But I, you know, I'm very concerned about making it sustainable because I, I don't want it to be something that goes gangbusters for a year or two years or three years and then withers on the vine when you join the school committee. then withers on the vine when you join the school committee or something, right?
And can I, can I speak to that? So, I do think, I recognize, and especially every time I watch a town council meeting or select board meeting, that there's so many vacancies for volunteers in the community. And to some extent, I do think that a risk of forming another organization for Lunenburg, which is already a small community, is overtaxing the available resources. But taking that into consideration, I do think that if we're very mindful and strategic about targeting specific audiences, that we will, in a sense, be able to cross-pollinate. And so, by bringing people who haven't been engaged in the process into it, then they are easier to talk to about donating to the skate park. They might be even interested in doing crossover events for sports boosters and things like that. So, I think, yes, cross-pollination, I think, is going to be my buzzword there.
Good word. Anyone else? Dr. Burnham, did you have any questions, concerns?
I would echo the same. I truly appreciate it. I was fortunate enough in my career to have worked at the central office level in a district that had an ed foundation. And we worked very collaboratively with that foundation to fund projects that the local budget would never have been able to fund. So, I think there's a lot of great potential. And I get the concern about sustainability, but we're never going to know until we try. And if we get three great years out of it, then we get three great years out of it, right? I think it's worth a go.
Yeah. Thanks.
And my concern earlier was whether it was going to be overlap with the PTO, and I think you expressed that, that it was different. And I think you'll have that communication with the PTO. And also boosters too, they tend to do like more calendar fundraisers and being aware of different groups and organization fundraisers. I think that's important. So, there is no overlap. So, thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks. Tom, did you have anything?
If somebody wants to join, who should they contact?
So, at this point, we're not able to accept donations, but if anybody is interested in joining the board, they can reach out to us directly at leaffboardinfo@gmail.com. So, L-E-A-F, boardinfo@gmail.com.
Thank you.
And then, Tom's going to...
Hello. Hello, thank you. I just wanted to add a couple things. One is in response to Mr. Beardmore. I understand where you're coming from on that, and I think that it's actually a pretty good opportunity to engage more people like Sybil, who find it difficult to engage in other ways, but are still looking to engage, but just don't have the time. We're trying to set the meetings so they are not, not excessive, you know, and they're not going to be overly long. It will really depend on donations and grant proposals that come in from the educators. But we aren't looking to, to take a lot of time from people. We're not looking to do events except for that one big one. We're just trying to, you know, boots on the ground and try to, try to get some, rally some support for the students here, so... And then also, from Ms. Archibald, we have a, we're going to be reviewing the bylaws. And in, in the bylaws, we, we would really like it to say, to state that the, the first group of board offerings that we do would be to school committee, PTO. It's not going to be a requirement, but if somebody from the, the school committee or the PTO or anybody else wants to participate in that way, then they would have a, like a...
A seat at the table.
A seat at the table, ahead of, ahead of some other people, maybe. Because, like you had spoken about earlier, it's really important to us that there's collaboration and consistency. We would never want to, to approve a grant for something that would then go, well, you can't do that, that's part of the curriculum. You know, we don't know the curriculum as well as you do, so we would really value your input on that. And, yeah, work together as a one-big team.
I think, I thought of one more example, which is technology capacity. So, you can't apply for a grant that needs Wi-Fi robots that max out your Wi-Fi technology. So, it's really important to have somebody at the table who can say, oh, actually, our plugs don't support that kind of amperage, or whatever it is that we wouldn't know about.
Yeah. So, it won't be, it won't be a requirement, but it, I would like it to be part of the bylaws where it's offered first. And then, even if somebody isn't on the board, we would still need to be able to be in communication with you to make sure it falls in line with what the school has in vision. So, can't just come in and buy a robot for the school and then go, what are you guys doing with this robot? So, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we're going to take off and, well, watch the meeting virtually. So, thank you all for staying.
Thank you.
Don't let Tony talk, it'll go a lot faster.
We know.
And just as a point of information, the slide deck is also posted with our meeting documents.
Found it.
Great.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business, discussion on back-to-school updates.
So, you have a report compiled from the principals, the typical information about class sizes at each grade level, new hires in each building. As you can see, the list is long. We were very, very busy all summer long with hiring for open positions. I don't think there's any need to go over all the detail. However, all of the principals are on the call this evening, so if anyone has any questions, they're here to, to answer them for you.
Does anyone on the committee have any questions?
First days went well, as you said in your report, so...
Yeah.
Good job.
Yeah.
Yesterday went well with the kindergartners, which...
It was a very smooth opening.
I would just say that a thank you to the administrators, both central office and in the buildings, for putting things together, for hiring all those people. I, I know the effort that it takes to sit through all these interviews and sift through what to do next, and, and the time and effort is greatly appreciated.
Do we have a list of open positions that we're still trying to hire for?
There were a few open para positions. We do, I have some information for you relative to open facilities positions. But I think all of our professional staff positions at this point have been filled.
Really?
We, we actually have all of our school psychologist positions filled. I believe our speech-language pathologist positions are filled. We were able to finally fill an open nurse position, and I'm pleased to say that Katie McGuire has returned to the staff.
No kidding? I just saw that. Welcome back, Mrs. McGuire.
Yeah. We, we really weren't having much luck with the, the posting at the Turkey Hill level. It was posted for months, literally. So, we needed to have a nurse in each building. So, we reassigned one of the nurses at the middle high school, because we had two in the building, over to Turkey Hill. And then, posted the open position up at the middle high school. And that's when Mrs. McGuire applied, so...
Fantastic. This was a really tough summer for the public. This was a very difficult hiring summer.
It was highly competitive.
We lost people, we had open positions, it was very difficult hiring. And so, having this many positions filled, thank you very much. Thank you. I know that was a lot of, and thank you.
And there were teaching staff that volunteered their time to be on committees all summer too.
Oh, yeah, thank you, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you to them, and thank you to the, all the volunteers on all the hiring committees. But this is impressive.
Mr. Scoll, ready?
So, I just wanted to say something. Our neighbors had a kindergartner start yesterday. And my wife and I go for a walk every day, every night, and we saw them, and, you know, we talked to them about how the first day was. I remember how scary that first day was for me. And I just wanted to say that the team at LPS made such a good impression. And it was clear to me that the parents felt like it was an opportunity, that their kid was excited, and that they felt that this person was, that their kid was going to a place where all of the people would make him feel safe. It was really, really nice. And I, I just, when I came to Lunenburg, my first point of contact with anybody in the town was Chrissy Carboni. And again, that's the person they mentioned as being just lovely. So, I, I wasn't there, we don't have any kids at the LPS anymore, but it seems like you put a team together that did the same thing for them, that they did for me and my family when we came. So, I think they deserve a special shout-out.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really excited about how the, the team at the primary school in particular is setting up. I think it was a really good fit all the way around. And Dr. Beth Anne Cormier has not yet been able to join us as the assistant principal at Turkey Hill because she's still fulfilling her contract obligation. But I'm sure that once she joins the building, we'll, we'll see something very similar.
When, when is she starting?
Her contract obligation would carry her through so that she wouldn't be able to start until October 8th. However, I had a conversation with the superintendent, and he's working to backfill as soon as possible, so it's possible that she may be able to start in a couple of weeks. But worst-case scenario, the first part of October. And happily, we have a very experienced principal in Mr. Yvonne, so, you know, he's been, he's been doing a great job carrying that, that ship on his own for a few weeks, and we're helping out as needed to make sure that he has what he, he needs until she can onboard. But I'm sure that we will be equally excited to see the, the team dynamic that sets up at Turkey Hill as well. We're really excited about the administrators that we've been able to bring onboard. Very lucky to have such experienced folks.
Thank you for this, though.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the FY26 budget timeline and priorities.
So, you have an outline. This outline is also available on the website, put together by Dr. Gilson. It doesn't really deviate from what has been our past practice, so if anybody would like to make any suggestions for a different timeline, we're certainly open to hearing those thoughts from the committee.
My, my only comment is the same one I make every year, which is we've got to rectify the dates between the finance committee and the school committee budget hearing. I strongly believe that the school committee should approve a budget before it is brought to the finance committee.
Yep.
And that will need to be resolved.
Right. I, I think that, truthfully, the only way to resolve it is for us to change our timeline and accelerate our timeline.
Is there a reason we can't accelerate our timeline?
We, we can. It's just you'll be voting on a final budget the first meeting in March. And just, just for context, my first year here, setting the FY...
I don't know.
20 budget, I guess? It would have been during 1819, the school year 1819. The budget hearing for the school committee was held in April. And it was at the request of Mr. Beardmore at the time on the finance committee, looking to have an approved budget come before the finance committee, that we moved it back a month into the second meeting in March. And now, potentially, you know, kind of further compressing...
These things go full circle, yeah.
And having a voted budget. The, the challenge there, though, is not so much about bringing forward a budget and having you vote that first meeting in March. We have to post in the newspaper...
Right.
A full seven days ahead of that budget hearing. And in that posting, we have to specify what the dollar amount and what the percent increase to that budget is, which means we would have to know those numbers by the very end of February, which sometimes is when we're finding out what our health insurance increase is. So, it, it, there are some challenges with further compressing our, our timeline.
Was this calendar derived from the proposed calendar that the former town manager brought forth? Or was this, you know, was there some consultation with the interim town manager and the chair of the finance committee?
The inquiry went to the chair, and I explained, you know, what our timeline, date-wise, would, would be. And the, the date that was part of the town manager's timeline is what came back. That said, possibly in the coming months, there'll, there'll be some more conversation and a shift.
Yeah, I mean, there's a, there's a lot, there's a lot of water to flow onto the bridge between now and then. I just wanted to raise it as an issue.
I, I did listen to my three hours of finance committee meeting today, and this was brought up. And the chair of the finance committee did have that same March 13th date on his, he's trying to accelerate it faster on his end so that they are not writing their town report as they're walking to turn it in, because they also have a nightmare at the end of their season. But a couple of things he did suggest, as long as we're talking about this, was they were talking about maybe putting three departments a night in instead of two. Well, that'd make a really long meeting. But that, that's one possibility. They also thought, commented that, why do they even listen to Monty Tech? Because you have no choice in what you pay them anyways. It's very nice to know what they're doing. Could they come in early when we have time and we'll find out what they're doing? But it, it takes up their time at a very critical night. Right, they have them down on the 19th...
Address, yeah.
After, after us. So, maybe if they settled that, we could slide in. But, but that was another thing. And they said that if we feel like we're going to be in trouble like last year, to let them know quickly, so...
Probably.
Well...
Are we declaring that right here tonight?
I'm just saying.
So...
With my comments about that.
When will we have a handle on cost for next year?
So, there are a few things that are impacts that are unknown at the moment. This evening, you'll be ratifying one of those previously unknown. You'll be taking up the contract for the paras. You'll, we'll talk about this shortly. It's a one-year agreement for the current year. So, we still don't know what the impact to FY26 is because we will begin work on that three-year agreement in a matter of a few short months, actually. So, until that's settled, that's still an unknown with an impact to FY26. And at the moment, contract negotiations with the teachers are ongoing, so that's a rather significant unknown. We intend to start working on the budget, literally, in a matter of weeks, for the other non-salary-type impacts to the budget. But honestly, tho, those are the big ones. Those are the two largest group of, of staff that we have. That's a big unknown. It's a big unknown.
And I feel like it's a budget season too, so we see numbers as they come in too. Health insurance will be something later on too.
When's our bus contract up?
We would have to go out to bid late December, January.
So, it's this year?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
This is going to take longer than we want it to take. It, it always does, and I, I'm not kidding when I say it's going to be another tough year. I really, truly believe that that is going to be the case. There's a big, been a big hullabaloo in Lunenburg over the course of the last month or two about boards following charter, bylaws, and policies. Last year, we did not have a fiscal forecast, which is a violation of our charter. We got to the, we got to the warrant late. The warrant deadline was surpassed by at least a couple of... The warrant deadline was surpassed by at least a couple of weeks. And the Finance Committee still did not have a report in the warrant. And no real hullabaloo came out of any of that. Rather, it's how we amend our policies was the controversy recently. And my reason for bringing that up is, is I think that this needs a look. The, the reason why this timeline is artificially backed up well into the month of March, town meeting is the 3rd of May, is to allow for time to print and mail the warrants. And it's 2024. I, I can get a physical mailer to my customers of my company the day after tomorrow if I call the right number tonight. But, but Lunenburg cannot get a warrant in the mail in less than a month, apparently. So I, I guess my point is, is why are we putting ourselves through this? And, and I can't get, I've never been able to get a straight answer to that question. And I, I think that given what we've been through the last year, I think that we, that question deserves an answer.
Mr. Skolmbrady?
I 100% agree. I have never been in a town that had a town government style of governance. Ohio, where I come from, they think this is crazy. I, I kind of think it's quaint and nice, but I did not realize that that was the source of the delay. And for it to be such a simple logistics question that has never been answered strikes me as nuts.
Well, and we did violate the policy last year by several weeks. So.
This is the dumbest thing I've ever heard. Like, why can't we get an answer as to like, who's our printer? If you're serious in saying you can get it the day after tomorrow, I don't even, it's like unfathomable to me that we need a month.
It might need to go to the state. It might need to prove.
I don't know. I don't know.
Sometimes Massachusetts state laws are the reason we have to do that stupid.
Massachusetts open meeting law is a disaster. But I think that the fact that we have this issue, that we know what the questions are and who we need to ask, and we've never got an answer, is bananas. Like, who's, who's the person, like, do I need to go to Carter?
No, he's on Zoom, but yeah.
This, this is crazy. If it's like, every board in town is backed up because we have a printer who apparently is like Jochen Gutenberg's last apprentice and is cranking the stuff out by hand?
Oh God, please save his head, son.
Anyway.
I agree with Peter.
So can we, at the, alright, so you guys, when you say in several weeks are going to start, when would a fiscal forecast?
Typically, it comes in January.
January.
And it mentions in the policies, the town's financial policies, that the budget cycle starts with the fiscal forecast at a joint meeting of the
Yes.
Select Board Finance Committee and School Committee.
Yeah, the, are we going to talk about those pol-
We are.
Okay, later, because I have questions about that too. Are those policies that were shared with us that we're going to talk about later, are those existing policies? Or are those new proposed?
I would save that for.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a very nuanced answer.
Is there any other discussion on the FY 26 budget timeline and priorities?
I wish we could move it sooner, but I understand why not. And also, January to a May town meeting does seem like it should be enough.
It is plenty of time. See, there was, I heard there was an override that passed, that they had plenty of time to plan an override.
Yes.
It actually passed, so it's possible.
Um, I would just ask that if there are looming terrifying issues, we talk about it as soon as possible? Or begin to talk about issues that are going to arise that are, were previously unforeseen? But, you know, that's how we did it last year too. We started talking in October about the looming issues for this year.
It, it is a whole new season. It's, it's a budget season. It's not something that just comes out and that's it, right? It's going to take some time. Mr. Skolmbrady?
One thing that I will say is that going through the Budget Task Force process with Renee Emke and Evan Waters and the people from the town, and I'll give her a special praise, Dr. Gilson, we were able to get like a, a much better picture to our sister boards about the needs that we have in terms of salary. I think that one of the driving issues that we have is retention. And I think that solution is obvious. And I think that we have done, and I'm not saying like me, but you guys have done a very good job of communicating that to Renee and to Evan and to the people in the town. So like, if, if we're going to try to say like, what's the scariest thing? It's retention. And what's our biggest cost? Retention. And I think that for the first time, we've really said, what is the town's placement among comparable towns? And what is the school district's placement among comparable towns for salary? And I don't think that we have identified a solution that will solve all the problems on the Budget Task Force. But I think that it is fair for us to say that the people on our sister boards are aware of what our big issue is. And if that's not our big issue, then, I mean, kind of God help us, but that, that is it, right? Like, if we're talking about like, the, the, the possibility for a crisis, it would be retention issues around comparable pay for other.
We had a, a really challenging year last year, throughout the year, with people for various reasons vacating positions during the year. And, uh, we had significant challenge attempting to fill them. There are some professionals who would never leave their current job in a district during the school year to take a lateral move to the same job in a different district. That, that's pretty rare. But they would potentially make that move at the end of a school year for the start of another school year. So it's a challenge for sure when positions are vacated. Again, it's a variety of reasons. A spouse is being relocated for work. We lost a person. Uh, somebody deciding not to return after a leave of absence. Others finding dream jobs and opportunities and taking them. I think in some part, like I've said before, driven, um, by some level of anxiety around uncertainty for job security when we're talking about major cuts, right? All through last year's budget cycle. So you can understand why people would explore options. And if they're finding that they could be paid more, um, then they're, they're taking that option. So, um, last year, we spent a lot of time trying to fill positions and, um, find alternate solutions to fill gaps. And the time, effort and energy spent there is time, effort and energy that is taken away from the major focus. And that's forward progress around impacts related to, uh, teaching and learning. If we can't find a way to get us to a place where we can provide more stability in our staffing, we're, we're just going to continue to have years like this. Which is not good for the kiddos in the fifth grade whose teacher's in, but then out on leave and then, you know, extending a leave. And we're, okay, well, you, you've had one substitute in for four weeks and now there's a different substitute in. Again, not already well-versed in our curriculum, here temporary. Like those sorts of impacts to student progress, they're, they're real. And I would be very happy not to have multiple years, particularly consecutive multiple years of that kind of, um, tap dancing to, to keep it all going, uh, to make sure that the kids are getting the best experience that we can possibly provide as we sort of patchwork things together.
Mr. Skolmbrady?
The, the one thing that I will say, and this is something that Renee, Renee, at the last Budget Task Force meeting, made a comment about comparing our per pupil expenditure to Maynard's per pupil expenditure. And then I looked at the data about teacher pay. And while they do have one rung that is below us, everything else is higher than us. And that pointed me to the conclusion that retention problems exist in two ways. You could have a retention problem in the sense that people don't want to stay. But you could also have a retention problem in the sense that people don't want to come.
Correct.
And so.
And we did lose candidates that were the first offer and it was declined because they were making more where they were. Or they also had other offers pending or on the table. And there were either a better salary, benefits, what have you, and they made a choice to go elsewhere. The thing that I will also say though, is that we, we've been able to bring on some very seasoned, uh, experienced, highly qualified professionals. So there is something about Lunenburg that when you've been in the field for a while, you recognize that there are things other than just the salary. And people are making a decision to come to Lunenburg for those other not quantified factors. I can't speak to that directly, but I'm sure you could have conversations with any number of the, um, the administrators that we've hired and they can talk to you about what they see in this district that makes it very attractive for them. When you have younger teaching staff, younger professional staff, they don't have, uh, the perspective and wisdom that comes with years of, uh, experience in a variety of ways to get to that place where you can recognize that there are other things besides just the salary. But I will say, we are falling further and further behind. And the salary, even for those folks who are looking for the other factors that would bring them here, in spite of those other factors are going to say, no. Like, I cannot take that kind of a cut, right? And the folks who joined us took cuts. They, they absolutely did. I'm grateful for that.
But I, I think the town needs to be prepared for the fact that we are going to have to overhaul the salary structure
Yes.
to retain teachers and to continue forward progress on student achievement.
Yes.
It is not just a tweak here or there.
Right.
We are substantially behind even poorer towns that are, are comp towns based on all sorts of data indicators. You know, Dr. Gilson, one of her slides for the last meeting showed that even though we had slight increases on per pupil expenditure, when you factored in increases in inflation, we had actually not just flat funded, but we had reduced funding over the past five years. That cannot be sustained. We do not have the capacity to do that, right? And if I'm wrong, if there's another issue that's scarier, like the elevator, that never seems to be fixed. Let me know, but like.
They're both working right now.
Yes. But we really need to put some effort into communicating to the, the people of the town of Lunenburg that like, the education that you expect that is a hallmark of this town needs to be funded fairly.
Thank you. I'd like to move on with our agenda. The next item on the agenda is the 2024, 2025 School Committee Goals. So you have last year's goals. We can review those, uh, and then discuss potential goals for this year. So, uh, goal last year, uh, first goal was, it is the goal of the School Committee that the 2024, 2025 budget, we approve, supports our prioritized programs and provides the students of Lunenburg with the best possible educational opportunities. Action steps, the School Committee will carefully consider the superintendent's proposed budget, paying close attention to funding in the areas of differentiated instruction, equity, family engagement and priorities established by the School Committee in light of the sunsetting ESSER funds. The School Committee will collaborate with the superintendent during budget development by making priorities known and the benchmarks were passage of the 2024, 2025 budget that reflects School Committee priorities as well as the best possible educational opportunities for Lunenburg students. Any discussion on budget goal one?
Wasn't easy, but we did it.
Exactly. That's what I was thinking.
I think the.
Check.
The thing to love is whether we want to continue something along the, the budget or the goal in the future.
This needs to be number one budget for next year too, is other than the part about the sunsetting ESSER funds, but we need to continue.
Yeah, I think it's a, the, the, I, I think it's a goal, but I think it's a, the context is different now. You know, based on the things that, uh, Mr. Skolmbrady and the superintendent just talked about, right? Our, we need to be thoughtful about the budget this year in terms of our ability to sustain what we're doing in a increasingly competitive and inflationary environment. And we need to speak with exactly the facts and figures that you've just cited and make that case. And we need to partner with our staff and with our unions and with our administrators and with our parents and students, as it turned out last year as well, which we didn't really project and, you know. Uh, but, but I, I think that, you know, that all, they, that community that we talked about as part of a community engagement goal a couple of years ago is, th- these things are coming together and, and we need to foster that.
Thank you.
I would add to this also about partnering with, um, the town and, and the work that's being done in the Budget Task Force. I think we need to somehow weave that into this goal somewhere.
Yes. So my thought is, you guys give me feedback. I'll come back with a draft and we can go from there.
Sounds good to me.
Alright, anything else on budget? Uh, goal two was policy. It is the goal of the School Committee that updated relevant policies will be developed, approved and put into practice. Action steps, policy will be reviewed and/or developed in the areas of equity, family engagement and athletic head injuries. Benchmarks to review and approval of these policies. Look, we made some baby steps. It was a very busy year, but.
We did.
Yeah, we've got some first reads here and, yeah.
And the, we talked about.
We've talked about the athletic head injuries.
There's a first read.
Policy two coming out today, so.
I mean, that's.
Very timely.
Going to be three more readings before that becomes policy.
Are there thoughts on continuing a, a goal on policy?
I'm not sure that it's, I'm not sure that it's goal-worthy at this point. Like I, I'll talk about later on tonight in Athletic Advisory, we're going to bring forward a, a policy revision proposal for fundraisers and, you know, that. And those things should come along as they come up, but I'm not sure that they're goal-worthy.
Priority.
Right, yeah.
Alright, goal number three was communication transparency. It is the goal of the School Committee that all business executed is done so in a transparent manner and is communicated to members of the school community and the community at large. Action steps, information regarding differentiated instruction, equity, prioritization of budget items, athletic funding and sources, plans regarding Turkey Hill Elementary School and all other School Committee topics will be presented in open meeting with necessary documentation available on the school website. Benchmarks, minutes taken and packed videos will be documented. This action.
I'm, I'm just going to pat ourselves on the back and say, we did a great job. And I think that the fact that the budget, the override passed and that the budget worked meant that people finally got behind us. And I think that part of that is because Dr. Burnham and Juliana and, uh,
Annika.
Annika did such a good job of constantly revising budgets. I also think that Carol did a really good job of duking it out with the powers that be. And I think that Peter and Carol, their presentation was not just content perfect. It was pitch perfect. You had the right people making the right appeals at the right time. So, I mean, when we were in the mud on the bu- bus policy, I was like, this is never going to work. We're never going to get there. And then to have a budget override pass, I think that's proof that that's working. And then to have a budget override pass, I think that's proof that that's working and that it's doing a good job.
I think the transparency is what got it done, the fact that.
Absolutely.
Very open about it. And we went through the budget line by line. We answered like the hundred questions and I know it's irritating and it makes for very long meetings, but in the end, I mean, we went by the budget line by line, we pointed at everything, we knew, we were open with the community about what was happening and where the needs were. And I think that really is helpful and it's also how government should work.
Yeah. I think we need to be thoughtful about how to sustain this.
Yeah.
I think you're right.
And I, I think that there's an opportunity potentially to add to it with, you know, the topic that came up that I raised at our last meeting around agility when it comes to communications. And as issues come up, what can we do to ensure that accurate information is used in response to misunderstandings or misinformation? And I don't think that we have that agility right now. And I think we need to be thoughtful about how we can put that into place and into practice.
So just a little background information for the committee. A couple of weeks ago, my team sat with the administrators for one of the town, the local Facebook pages. And we talked about the challenges of misinformation being communicated and we, I think, had a very good meeting and it seems to me that they feel comfortable that when they're seeing information that's being discussed, that they know that we're a resource, that they can reach out to us and we can provide verification as to whether or not the information that is being discussed is accurate. So we're making a little bit of progress on that front as well.
That means that the community views you as speaking with credibility, which I think is important.
Well, I think, I think it's also about trust. And I think our work over many years of trying to be transparent, being open and accessible, having meetings, responding to emails, taking phone calls, people start to understand that they can get their questions answered and they start to trust that a bit, right? So I think it's a combination of things, but that takes time to establish. You know, someone new could come in to the role and they're going to have to work to establish that trust and rapport and credibility all over again. But it can be done.
Looking at the goal three, Turkey Hill stands out to me. Now, I just, I think buildings, I think we talked about the football fields, the buildings in generals and the facilities, maybe there's a goal around that, kind of continuing to see it through.
I would like to see a plan of record by the end of this year. That was the term that was used somewhat squishily a few years ago when it came to tissy passios, but I would like to see a plan of record by the end of this year with respect to both Turkey Hill and the athletic complex. And I'm not quite sure how to, how to define what the record or the plan should be at this point, you know? But what that means, does it need to be acknowledged by town meeting or something? I'm not really sure. But, and I'm not sure how feasible that would even be at this point, but I think that we need to drive to some sort of resolution on those two areas.
I think, I think you're right. And I think it's important that it be captured in public record. Liz Peterson is able to go back and verify what was agreed to, when, with transition of buildings back to town, so on and so forth, because it was.
Recorded.
Recorded in the minutes. So getting the information and sharing it publicly, that can happen. But I think honestly, part of the challenge, oh friend, is trying to find places where certain key information can live and be archived and be accessible, because that's one of the challenges that we've had with turnover in key positions. Where are those records, right? So I think it's really critically important for the historical, yep, they're accessible, we can go find them. This is exactly what was relayed to the community publicly about any number of things. So I, I do, I think that that's important.
So on that subject, if you're looking for another potential topic, and it was a very good segue when you talked about the archiving and continuity of information. I perceive that we have some operational challenges in Lunenburg that directly relate to our ability to retain good employees because they get burned out, running into drop balls and cleanups on aisle five and friction in the course of getting their jobs done because there's nobody to receive the request or it doesn't get processed or whatever the case might be. There's a gentleman that spoke at last night's select board meeting, Logan O'Connell, who is a 2020 graduate of Lunenburg High School and is a very recent employee, new employee of the town in the building department. And I would encourage people to go back and watch it. It's on YouTube. It's probably the most well-thought-out thing that's been said in the select board meeting in months. And his, his, which I guess is not a high bar, but. Mr. O'Connell's comments were about process and documentation and, and what I would define, and continuity and quality at the end of the day. He didn't use that word, that's my word, but it was really about quality. And, and, you know, this might not even be a one-year goal. This is a big thing, right? But when we're talking about being a good employer and delivering a quality product, those are the things that I think we need to be mindful of. And some of it's driven already by, by, you know, statute and mandates and those kinds of things, but there are other things that we put into a policy, but I'm not really sure that the implementation of that policy is documented or the processes are clear. And so I'd like us to at least think about how we might be able to improve in that area.
Do you think that's connected to finance? Would you consider that connected to finance?
Um, it could be.
Because I'm wondering even if we can connect it back to budget and finance.
Yeah, it could be. I mean, I view this as more operational than budget.
Because that my, I had on my list was munis, like.
Well, and that is, so that's both, by the way. You know, I view that as budget and operational.
Are you talking about the documentation part that the young man was speaking about, which by the way, very proud, he's a Lunenburg graduate because he was extremely intelligent, made a lot of great points last night. But are you talking about the documentation part or the, just specifically the operations and the.
Well, they're linked, right? So for example, I'm going to make something up because I don't know the details of any of this, right? But we put out a policy that says reimbursements need to follow this policy, right? And a memo goes out in email, right, to the, to the staff that says, this is the way we're going to do it, right? Okay, well, half of the math department quits next year, we get a whole bunch of new people. Where do they go to know that this is how you process a PO or get a reimbursement or whatever? And we could very well have that completely well documented. I honestly don't know. But my sense is, is that there are a lot of things that kind of fall into that category of, well, talk to, you know, Mr. Smith and he's the one who knows how to do that and, okay, well, if Mr. Smith, you know, retires tomorrow, then what?
Yep.
And I just, and I just, I get the sense that sometimes our errors are related to people not knowing where to go, how to raise an issue, how to get an issue resolved, and that leads to frustration.
Yeah. But is that more of a town wide side or a school?
I think it's both. I honestly think it's both. I think it's probably worse in the town side, but I, but I think that we suffer from some of those sameills.
Yep.
And if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. Like, you know, tell me I'm wrong, but.
On that particular example, it's documented in multiple places, but teachers don't naturally go to read every word in all of those documents. So in order to make sure that everyone would follow that particular process, we actually added a slide that outlined the process on the mandatory trainings that everyone has to do at the start of every year. So that it wouldn't continue to be a problem where people didn't follow protocol and process and it's a problem.
I think it can be a challenge, too, if people aren't doing it as part of their daily routine.
Yep.
If it's once a year they're doing it or once every two years, they might forget something or it changes.
And there are also things that, you know, I brought up at the last meeting, and again, we don't have to capture all these in goals, but that directly relates to the public perception of us, which is hiring, right? What is our hiring process at a high level? And is there any transparency that comes along with that? Can the public understand what are the vacancies? When a vacancy is closed, is it resolved and publicized how that vacancy was closed? Like those kinds of things. And I understand, like in the summer, when you guys are going through what you're going through and you're trying to get, you know, teachers to volunteer their time to be on a staffing committee or whatever, that there's a lot of ad hoc activity.
Yep.
But at a high level, like that, that information should be clear and by our experience of last month, it definitely is not.
So again, people don't necessarily know where to go look, right? Our open positions, we've done a pretty decent job of keeping up with, including them on the business office webpage. It's not on the main page, you'd have to click to get to the business office, but the open positions are there. The challenge with the website is you could put a link to employment and we can certainly look at that. It's just that the more direct links you'd put to things, then the list becomes so lengthy that people are missing that in the list. It's a challenge, right? But that information is available and we do follow a process when we're interviewing, right? Having committees representative of folks that are going to be working alongside the hire and we have defined questions.
I definitely got the personal, my email to my personal email asking if I was willing to volunteer to be on the hiring committee.
Yep. Yeah, so.
Anyway, I just, you know, but these are my thoughts.
Yep.
I get the sense that there's, you know, I want to be as good of an employer as we possibly can be. And I get the sense that there's a lot of frustration around, around, you know, the things that exist outside of direct instruction with a, with a student, right? And, and the processes and, and, you know, in my job, we get surveyed twice a year and, you know, we keep track on, on employee opinions about things and track it. And then there's open comments and, you know, what are the worst things about your job? Well, this, 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 and this. And then the managers say, okay, well, we're going to pick a few of those and go aim to fix them, right? And, and.
We have a mechanism for that. We have routine meetings with the union leadership for most of our unions scheduled, like routine. And that's where those sorts of issues get brought forward and we work hard to resolve them, like in that moment, right? Come to the table with a solution for things. So it exists to some extent.
I think we, I think we've had some good discussions on the school committee goals. I think if you have any additional information, please send it to me, any ideas, and I will draft up some for our next meeting. The next item on the agenda is the town financial policies.
So you received a rather lengthy document of all of the town policies. We're still in the process of trying to check and cross-reference any policies that the school committee has that might not sync up with the expectations in these policies. I'd invite Dr. Gilson to come up if she has any thoughts to share regarding the review of these policies. I think the one, the one policy that stood out to us as really being problematic is the policy around grants. Because it's looking for pre-approval of every single grant before we submit the grants. And there are certain grants that we, they're entitlement grants and we submit them every single year and we typically use the funds for the same types of either staff or materials or what have you.
That's also outside of our scope. That's so outside of our scope of oversight.
So one of the things that we considered, we could add to the reorganization document that we follow every year when there's, you know, following the town election and we do the reorganization, you always make a motion and take a vote on allowing water in the auditorium during town meeting. You always authorize continuation of all policies that are in place. We could add a motion to authorize myself or designees to pursue any grants that would align with and further support the work that's outlined in the strategy, the goals, the school improvement plans, the SOA, the Student Opportunity Act plan that we have to submit to the state. Because basically that's what we do. We pursue any funding sources that further the work that we're trying to do. We also get Department of Public Health grants that our nurses oversee and execute. So for us to have, and sometimes the announcement of grants that are available at the Department of Ed, the turnaround time is sometimes, you got a deadline in two weeks. So for us to have to schedule a meeting that would have a quorum to get prior authorization in order for us to submit on a deadline, that can become very cumbersome. So that was one of the solutions that we thought that would make it pretty straightforward and simple, that annually, prior to the summer when the entitlement grant allocations come out and we have to draft and submit our grants to the state, that maybe it's a sort of overarching blanket authorization for us to pursue and submit all of those grants.
Have these been adopted as the official policies?
No.
Because further, no grant funds shall be used to supplant an existing expense for the purpose of diverting current funds to another use.
So, so my take on this document, this was done as a project that was kicked off by the previous town manager and it was a state agency that came in and audited our materials and looked at our charter, our bylaws, our policies and best practices that are, you know, in place at the state level and came up with this document. You see at the beginning, it is not a policy, it is a financial policies manual. And what it does not articulate is in any given line, in any of these sections, it'll tell you what were used for, for references, but it does not tell you what specifically any of the language refers to back in a policy, a bylaw, charter, or anything, or it's just best practice and a recommendation. So what I don't know still is, would the select board just adopt this and it supersedes all policy and then somebody has to go in and redline policy? Do we have to go, does the town need to go in and make changes to policy for this to become a thing? Like the. to become a thing? Like, the, the, the adoption of this, to me, is very problematic. Like, I just don't...
Have they voted on it?
I don't, no, nothing. It's been just circulated for comment.
Right.
So, so, you know, my, I, I, I actually think it's a really good document, if it were all true and in place. But the question is, is how do you get to, you know, number one, do you agree with everything that's in it? And I think there are some issues there.
Mm-hmm.
But number two is, how do you get there? And, and there isn't a clear roadmap in my mind for how you do that. And, and administratively, because we are part of the town, we do have to conform to select board policies, particularly when they deal with the scheduling of the warrant, for example, or, or those kinds of things. But we are technically not, we are, we are, we are technically separate in terms of policies. So, our own policies would need to be audited and adapted for this to be put in, for us to comply with it, right? So, and we don't know what any of that redlining, we do not have a redlined version of this, to my knowledge, or, or a cited version of, you know, what, what comes from where. So it's a, in my mind, this is a, it, it's, it's a problematic document right now.
Mr. Scullbrine?
So, first of all, like, looking through this, when we first got it, I was like, why is this so big? And now that I realize that, like, no one's voted on this, this just seems like either, like, a bunch of suggestions or science fiction about how some outside auditor wants Lunenburg to work.
If you read the details, most of it is rooted in our existing policy and bylaws and charter. Like, it, it does reflect how we, how we do business in Lunenburg, but there are, there is additional best practice in here.
We don't do.
That we don't do, and it's not clear, like, what would actually need to be instituted in policy to get there, right?
It doesn't highlight what's...
So, it, it doesn't highlight the changes.
Here's the other thing. What purpose is there in us spending any time looking at this when we have some turmoil on select board and no town manager on a long-term basis?
Well, I think the concern is if the, the select board does say pass this manual, then we have to follow it.
Now, suddenly we...
My, my initial thought would be, I appreciate the, the work that Dr. Burnham has done with this and Dr. Gilson, but maybe it's first giving the interim town manager the feedback of our concerns. Maybe they can make changes, and if not, we have that backup plan. How does that sound?
That works.
Because I think you guys are the experts at the, what the concerns are. Relay those to the town, interim town manager, and then we can go from there.
But like, this is a procedural question. If he's the interim town manager, does he have the authority to put these in place without the select board?
No.
No, no. The select board has the...
Okay, so, if he doesn't have authority, and the current select board is somewhat contentious, are we...
Regardless.
You never know if they'll vote it through. It's not a spite, maybe.
All right, all right. So we should, we should at least put our comments on it.
I, I give them more credit than that. They, I don't think that these are the issues that are contentious with the select board, you know, like, it...
They're gonna look through this.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I, I don't...
Takes some time, though.
Right, right.
But it's good to give them the feedback. That's what they ask for. We're gonna give them the feedback.
I think they need the feedback in order to move forward.
Who's our liaison?
We don't have a liaison. It's the select board.
Okay.
But I think if they give us the feed, we give them the feedback, they'll give us the feedback as well.
The grant things especially are concerning, because I don't know if the town side is aware we are, we...
Well, as an example, grants come up all the time through the Department of Ed, and we're looking right now at the possibility of pursuing the PRISM grant. Um, if this were in place, I would have to schedule a special meeting of the committee to, to give us authorization to submit the grant.
Suffice to say, we don't want that.
That's far outside our scope. That's not what we do.
Again, which is why I say, if, if we have to have a workaround, a directive, an annual vote, right, that approves my leadership to pursue funding sources that align with and support what's been outlined as the work of the district, either through the strategy, superintendent goals, uh, school improvement plans, our, uh, Student Opportunity Act Plan, um...
Yeah, and I also think that there, there is potentially a very good reason for that policy in other areas where you don't have the, you don't have the breadth of professional staff that we do, where you've got a committee member or a junior employee or something that goes out and solicits a grant and gets it, and now all of a sudden, there's all kinds of strings or riders attached to that grant that, that, you know, become problematic.
Right.
And I think that's, that's really the, where, you know, where that comes from.
All right, moving on with the agenda. Uh, next item on the agenda is an action item, facilities and grounds report. You should have that in your folder.
And I will, um, uh, just ask you at the end of this to, um, just accept it as a report of progress. Um, facilities department, current open positions. We have four full-time evening custodian positions open.
You're still sharing.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Um, we have one part-time evening custodian position open and one maintenance position open. Um, since we've been struggling to fill, um, the open positions, um, we've come up with a plan that we're gonna try to fill some student custodian positions and at least give some extra hands-on to help the full-time custodians, um, that we have currently. Um, stay tuned. We'll, we'll see if we're successful at all in, in, uh, in that approach. Relative to capital projects, the primary school AC mini splits project is complete. Um, we came up just a bit short in terms of the funding because costs increased. Um, so, there is still one classroom on the second floor that will need to have, um, a unit installed as part of phase two, but we were able to install six units that would feed 12 classrooms.
So those are all second floor?
Yeah, so the second floor, the second floor is done except for one classroom.
So this project didn't, at the end of the day, touch anything on the first floor?
I don't, I don't, I'll double-check, but I don't think that there were units that were in, I'll, I'll double-check.
Okay.
There might be one or two down on the first floor. Um, so, again, that, that project, there's still a phase two. In addition, um, on our capital plan that we'll get to shortly, um, there's also, um, a mini-split project for Turkey Hill on the capital plan. The phase two is also in the capital plan, the tenure capital plan. Um, but we are hopeful that we're actually going to confirm that there's a meeting tomorrow with Mr. Blatt and a representative from, um, the green communities at the state level, um, to talk about the potential for any of the projects that we have on our, uh, capital plan, uh, for funding. And we, we think maybe that these projects with the mini-splits, because we would use them for supplemental heat...
Oh.
That, that may make them eligible. So, we'll, we'll have more information for you on that. But phase one at the primary is done. Um, Turkey Hill, the window security film, that was an FY25 capital-funded project. Uh, that's already in progress. Um, crews have been on-site, uh, this week, and, um, they're working with us in that, from 12:30 to 3:30, they're working on the exterior of the building, and then after school dismissal, they move inside to apply film, uh, from, from the inside of the building. Um, there is one, uh, of the, the windows, the window panels, uh, in the front lobby area that is cracked. That does need to be replaced, and as soon as that is replaced, and that's on order already, um, they'll complete the application on that one panel. Um, the, the main part of the project should be done within the next two weeks, maybe three weeks, uh, with the installation of that, uh, glass panel. Relative to the replacement of the exterior doors, um, the security upgrades for the access, um, and the, um, security camera, uh, installation for Turkey Hill and the primary, as well as the Turkey Hill fire alarm system upgrade. Uh, those are all temporarily delayed because we had to do asbestos testing in order to put the rest of the project out to bid. The initial part of those projects was bid out. The architects are in, the engineers, they're looking at the, the, the projects to get the specs to go out to bid. This has delayed any forward progress on that. The work's been done. We're waiting for, um, the final report of the assessment. And once we have that, we should then be able to move forward with bidding out the rest of the projects.
Do we anticipate that the asbestos issue is going to increase our costs?
There's potential there. There's potential there. Um, we'll have to wait and see what, what they provide for information, and then what the engineers, who are waiting on that information, have to say about it. Um, so stay tuned on that. Uh, again, it's been frustrating to have this delay, but it's what needs to be done to make sure that it's done properly and safely.
So one, one thought on this, and, this is frustrating to me, as you know, I've already expressed that to you. Um, these, we should try to ensure that the bid schedules of these are synchronized. And my reasoning for that is that there is, these projects were approved separately on the capital plan.
Yep.
And if we're in a position where we need to work with the town manager, the finance committee, and the capital planning committee to come to a resolution on, do we do, do we do none of them because the, because the price came in too high? Do we do two and not a third? Like, those kinds of issues are need to get, are gonna need to get discussed. But if you only have one of the things, it becomes a, kind of a non-starter in terms of looking at that based on the totality of the available funding. So, I just...
Most of those are hung up pending this report.
Yep.
And then, once we have that information, we'll be working with the architects to get the bid out the door for all of them. All of them.
You said, most of them are hung up waiting on the report. Which one isn't?
The door replacement, the, um, security access at Turkey Hill, the security access at the primary, and the, uh, fire alarm upgrades, replacement parts, uh, at Turkey Hill.
There's no, there's no asbestos at the primary school.
Okay.
Right.
That's, okay.
But they're likely gonna work in tandem...
They're gonna bid them together. It's the same project.
To do that, to do those projects. The other thing that we've been tipped off by, um, the architects, uh, they suspect, they highly suspect, that, uh, for the security upgrade projects, um, because they're gonna have to run wiring, and they're gonna have ladders and clippings of wire and all of that, that they aren't going to want to work with us and clean up, right? Work with us, do work at night, clean up, have the kids in during the day. Um, they want an uninterrupted, they will likely want an uninterrupted six-to-eight week window where they can leave their ladders and they can clean up after they're done. Um, we'll see, we'll see what we get when it goes out to bid, but there is a possibility for those projects that that may have to wait until June, because they're not gonna work and do what they can during December break, and then come back during February break, and then, whereas we can likely work with, um, the vendors who are gonna replace the doors, because we can do them, um, over time.
Is there any other questions or concerns about the facilities and grounds report? I'm looking for a motion.
I'd make a motion to accept the facilities and grounds report as presented.
One second, though.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate these being monthly.
Next item on the agenda is first read of the policies. We have student travel policy, chapter seven, seven, 766 policy, facilities policies.
Oh, boy.
I move to waive first reading of all of the above.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes, there hasn't been a second yet.
A second.
Any discussion? Ms. Archibald?
My, my question is that I think 3503 on our list is twice. Did I miss something? Did I, did I not read that correctly? I get 3503 security, and then 3503 edits public safety policy. I think it's the same thing. Something, something was twice, unless somebody caught it and fixed it.
Copy of, copy of, draft of edits that, yeah.
So there, there is a policy, 3503, that is, um, security, and that speaks to doors and locking of doors.
Yep.
Um, and then there is 350301, which is security cameras in the schools.
Right, but, but you have 3503 security...
And then copy of...
And then building.
And then on this list, and it's slightly different, and I'm just wondering why they're the same number. If you look at security, 3503, it has to do with...
I see what you're saying.
Yep.
Do you know what I mean?
Yep.
I'm just confused.
Yep.
Carol.
So that just needs to be, um, edited so that the 3503 is listed...
One of them is 3503 dot one.
Yep, but we're missing the reference to 3503 as the overarching...
Right, right. Something is, something is awry.
Yep.
And the other question I had was on 3501 point oh one, environmentally sustainable practice. Is that new? Because there's no redlining, and it says it was approved...
It was approved, yeah.
Um, on, on February 15th, uh, 25th of...
25th.
Blah, 2015, but there's no redline. So I don't know where the change is.
No, I don't, did we talk about those things?
It's possible that this was one that we did not recommend changes. I'll, I'll go back through the notes and, uh, double-check.
Okay.
This might be just one of the policies that was reviewed but not...
But it was fine.
Brought forward for revision.
Okay. Those are my questions. Now you may go ahead.
Any other discussion, comments? All right, so we have a motion on the table to waive the first read of the policies listed, and there's been a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Thank you.
Um, anybody listening might wanna know that these policies, are they on the website?
Yes.
Because we didn't read them, so...
Yes.
Sorry.
Thank you. That's very helpful. All right, next item on the agenda is a donation.
So there are no donations this evening, but, um, I'd like to be able to, um, carry this as a standing item, not here, uh, under new business, but, um, somewhere up above with approved line item transfers, warrants, et cetera. Um, because oftentimes, we will get information from the schools after an agenda has already gone to post, that they have received a check from the PTO that they want accepted. So that way, if it's just a standing item, I can let you know that there are no donations, or that we do have donations, and then we can accept them, and then not have to worry about revising agendas if something comes in late.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is old business. Action item, FY26 draft capital plan.
So I did, um, I did survey, uh, the members of the, uh, committee, uh, to get their thoughts on priority rankings for each of the projects that you wanted listed under FY26, and I provided you some analysis with mean, median, and mode.
Good job, good job. This is what happens when the chair is the math teacher.
I enjoyed it.
Um, and I just left, um, the last slide blank.
So this is slide 49 is the...
So that we can, I can just make some notes about what the committee decides relative to priority ranking.
And so going by, I guess, I'm gonna try to take the lead on this one. So going by the, the median and the mean, they both, number one was the driveway primary school, $30,000. So I would say potentially, and it had the mode as well, number one. Um, so I would potentially start that, if we can do a rough draft of a, a list, and then kinda go from there and have a discussion.
Okay. What's mode?
Mode is the most often.
Thank you.
Okay.
For the people out there...
All right, yes, for the people out there.
Right, go for it.
Doing a math lesson.
You're teaching us so many of the other...
Mode begins with M-O, and most begins with M-O, so it's a good way to...
I went to Wikipedia after our last meeting, but I didn't have time today.
And mean is the average.
Mean is the average. Median is the middle number. So when you list all five of ours, which one was in the middle?
Yes.
So it really, statistically, we're really close. Um, so same thing for the second one, the mean and the median were the same, uh, for the second ranking, was the playground at the... For the second ranking was the playground at the primary school, $30,000 as well.
Oh, wow.
Didn't show up as the mode, the most often. The...most often was a three.
That's interesting.
And the...it was interesting, the hot water tank actually was, mode was two. So that might be a discussion, too, whether we move the hot water tank. But the hot water tank and the...the hot water tank was the next on the mean, and also it was up there on the median tied for the second and the median. So I think those are kinda interchangeable, but I think we could go by the mean. It's still pretty close. Hot water tank was then the third.
Third, yeah.
Can I just say-
Turkey Hill, $20,000.
Mr. Chair, something about that playground? If there is a close call in the ranking, I think we should favor doing the project that would alleviate the worst possible liability for the district. And the playground remodel would be that.
Well, I think that's the discussion, so I think we should have if we wanna move stuff around. And again, I would also go back to the capital planning committee. We'll also make their rankings and finalize it, and the town manager as well. So it's...unfortunately, it's not fully up to us, but we can at least send our recommendations.
I feel like the driveway does need to come before the playground.
It do, too.
I would hate to put that much money into the playground.
To move it.
Only to have to move it.
I think they gotta go together. I, you know, in my mind, it's one, two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so then the next one was the hot water tank. So we had three was hot water tank. After that, we're looking at, and again, it's either/or, the mean versus median, and this one is really close, the generator at the primary school and the safety film at the primary school.
Can I have...
Yeah, Ms. Archibald?
Why is there a dash under mode?
There wasn't a mode. So if there's not a number that's most often, it doesn't have a mode.
Oh, well, see, there you go.
We're all learning.
Okay.
The only concern I would have on this one is that the safety film, we've heard from Mr. Beardmore, that it is not a popular topic. So I would lean towards putting the generator first and then the safety film.
Yeah, they do not wanna fund the safety.
But I'm open to discussion on that one.
I'd be fine with that.
And then following that is the last three, and these are all really close, so I am open to discussion. And this one is the utility pickup truck, security camera, and the safety film of the Lunenberg Middle High School.
I don't think they're gonna wanna fund the utility pickup with plow. I just don't think it's gonna sell well.
Yes, it's possibly a security camera, then utility pickup truck, and then safety film.
Yeah, I think-
Lunenberg Middle High School.
The security camera server is out of its time. Then I think that probably should go, yeah.
Ahead of safety film and utility pickup truck.
You refresh my memory on, this is a existing server today that we're just routing existing cameras back to that server? Or does this relate to the cameras that we're looking to install as part of these other capital planning projects? I don't, I can't recall exactly if they're connected or not.
It's the central server that we have currently is at its end of support. The useful life on the server is typically a 10-year window. So we'll be on borrowed time without any support.
Which tends to also mean security updates. If it's out of a support window, it's probably not getting security updates, which would be kind of ironic on a security-related server.
Yeah.
Do we, do we have the ability to spend less and route this traffic to some kind of cloud service? Has anybody explored that?
They have actually explored, but I do believe that this camera system is gonna require a central server. Because there have been discussions where we have moved things to cloud backup. So anything that's not cloud backup yet, I think is because it requires a server. But I can get some more information for you on that.
Well, I'd like to get this done, too, so...okay.
All right, so can we go down our rough draft of what we're thinking and have discussion from there?
Yep. So what I heard was, one is the driveway, two is the playground, three is the hot water tank, four is the generator, five is the safety film at the primary school, six is the security camera server, seven is the safety film, and then the utility pickup is last.
So-
Discussion. Mr. Beardmore?
For what it's worth, I was the Lone Ranger on the utility pickup and put it as number one. And I think my analysis on this was polar opposite of most people on the committee, it would appear. But my thinking on this is that we cannot put ourselves in a position where we are unable to...look, we have a staffing problem right now with our maintenance, and now we're about to have critical equipment problems where we, if we had staff, we couldn't even use them because we have equipment problems. You know, this is, this is a truck that is on its last leg. It's kinda beyond it. And we've got to maintain, this is all part of maintenance, you know? And in my mind, we gotta have it. And I understand that, you know, there's a history here of, well, we'll get a hand-me-down from the DPW or something like that. Those proposals are not on the table right now. There's no rescue plan when we have a vehicle that is beyond its serviceable life, and we can't do it. So anyway, that was my thinking on this. I understand if it's not the pleasure of the committee, but this is important equipment.
Why can't we talk to the DPW about a hand-me-down truck? Because they don't have any hand-me-downs?
Because we're pressuring them to extend the life of their vehicles as well, and they've got vehicles that are, you know, long in the tooth as well.
See, my concern on that, and why I did not rate it high, was that all this discussion about everybody's all gonna sing kumbaya and work together, and some, you know, they want us...I didn't think it would get through capital planning.
I don't think it's the year for it.
And that was why I didn't do that. I agree that it is a vital piece of equipment, but I didn't think it was gonna get through capital planning.
Yeah, I'd also worry about vehicles. I don't know what historically has been the past of accepting vehicles, but I feel like sometimes they just don't support vehicles on the capital plan.
We got one.
Now, I mean, we are funding vehicles.
Yeah.
But, and we just did one.
Yeah, we just got one.
We just got one.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna apply this year because-
Because we got one.
Sharing resources is the, seems to be a focus, so I don't think it's gonna get passed, which is why I rated it lower. I'm trying to think about what we can sell and what we can get. Although I do agree, we're going to need another pickup truck.
Ms. Scollbrady?
One thing that Ezekiel from the town has talked about in the Budget Task Force, and he's been awesome, like, really, really great, is trying to figure out ways to save money by sharing costs and expenses and procedures between both the town and the school. I would be shocked if there's no proposal from the Budget Task Force that doesn't involve some pooling of vehicles. And so if we put that as our number one, and then, you know, the Budget Task Force comes out and says like, well, why don't you guys pool these? Then it's like we kinda wasted our shot. So that is the only concern I would have and why I didn't rank it highly. But I think that you're right in the sense that if we don't...we need to do everything we can to shore up the maintenance and upkeep of the buildings while we have a staffing shortage. And this isn't an easy way to do that. But I'm just concerned that we'll put all of our eggs in that basket, and then the Budget Task Force will come up with some plan about how to pool resources and pull that out from under us.
And I look at it, too, is that the capital planning committee's gonna make their own judgment, too, on this after hearing from the superintendent. I think a lot of times, maybe we look at it from an educational standpoint, too. It's like, you see the playground, it definitely needs to be replaced, but you don't wanna replace it before you replace the driveway and figure out where the location is, too. So I feel like there's a lot of planning going with those, too.
And I think that the driveway is a request that public safety will be behind as well.
The driveway is too narrow, and it is a hazard, and we really-
It's possible.
It's...I was there the day that the fire alarm went off at last time, and that was, and the kids ran, and it was, it was a nightmare. Because nobody could get through, and parents were...
There's no doubt that we gotta deal with that.
I'm happy with these priorities.
Any other discussion on the order?
I will bring up that I was the number one on the security camera, because if the security camera can't secure, what is the point? So that is why I did that. I mean, if it no longer is receiving any upgrades, what kind of good is that?
Well, what that means is that it's more vulnerable. Right? So the server's gonna continue to run.
The server will still run.
It's still operating, but when you, when it ends the end of its support period, typically, a manufacturer is no longer sending security updates for the firmware or the operating system of that particular server. So when vulnerabilities are discovered, the kinda things that hackers go after, that there's any, those vulnerabilities are not patched, and the server becomes more vulnerable. Right? So it, now, there's literally millions of servers out there that are out of tolerance, right? Like, that's why we run into security problems all the time, so...
My thought was, looking at the list, I wanted to double-check, but I'm like, the next one it would bump would be the safety film of the primary school? And I feel like I would prefer to have the safety film of the primary school than the security camera server at this point. That was my thought.
Can you read the list again, Brian?
Yep, in order.
Yep.
Driveway, playground, hot water tank, generator, safety film at the primary, security camera server, safety film at the middle high school, and utility pickup with a plow.
I'm happy with that.
Any other discussion?
Do we need to make a motion on this one?
I'm gonna check. Yes, it is an action item. FY26 draft capital plan.
Okay. Motion to approve the above-stated priority rankings for the FY26 capital plan?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the drafted capital plan? Say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the paraprofessional contract ratification.
All right, so you have before you an MOU. The only challenges that what was provided to us, can we- By the union references a three-year agreement. And it's not a three-year agreement, it's a one-year agreement.
That was my one question.
I tried to reach out to the union representative to verify that what they all ratified on Tuesday last week was a one-year agreement, because that was what was agreed to in our last session.
Right.
So it does state the dates-
Yep.
-correctly. So I think it's more of a typo, and we can do a motion with the edit revision.
There was no confusion over this with the negotiating team.
My thought is if the association needs to go back and vote again, they can go back and vote again, but our vote-
My guess is that I'll be able to confirm that they voted a one-year plan, and we just need to edit this before it's signed.
Yes.
That's fine.
And this agreement was also provided to the town manager for review, who is also on the meeting tonight to vote. I don't know if other members of the bargaining team wanna offer any additional comment.
Yeah, I'll comment. This is, I've been on the school committee for two years, and this is the third collective bargaining agreement that I've negotiated. And they've all been pretty different. This was probably not the easiest one that we've done, but it has been probably the most professional and overall inspiring negotiation that we've gone through. The negotiating team for the paraprofessionals' union brought forth a number of asks, all of which, I think we agreed, were very well-thought-out and reasonable, mostly language-related things that, you know, we ultimately adopted in the language or worked through some logistical issues to make sure that they were, in fact, workable. And fair. And I think that there was a real partnership throughout that negotiation, that this needed to be something that was fair and respectful, not only of the paraprofessionals themselves, but also the importance of the job that they do and the criticality of their role to our operation. The one area that, you know, I think we all have come to realize is that there, just like we were talking about across the board in terms of our overall salary schedules, there's a real challenge there, based on what is a living wage, depending upon how you define that, the availability of hours. This is not a full-time, year-round job. And comparative salaries and hourly rates of paraprofessionals in other school districts that are drawing our people away. And so retention became a very important topic. What we came to realize was that we could not financially meet their ask over a three-year period without putting ourselves in a financial straitjacket, really, when it comes to out-budget years in '26 and '27. And so as a result of that, what we agreed to was a one-year contract at a, what I consider to be a very modest raise, at 4%, with an agreement that we are immediately gonna, you know, get back into it and look at restructuring their pay scale. Because the issue is not just the percentage of a COLA or something like that, but it's also the structure of things like, you know, when does longevity come into play? And how does that relate to, you know, a start date and when somebody came in at a different level of the pay scale and those kinds of things? So there's mechanical changes that we do need to address over time, but it's gonna take a little bit more time and more financial resource to be able to do it in a way that I think we all agree we would like to be able to do it. So my thinking on this is that this gives us an opportunity, and my pitch to the negotiating team collectively was, let's put ourselves on the same side of the negotiating table here and come to something that we can work together on for something that makes better sense for a longer period of time, even though we can't do it at an accelerated pace for this current fiscal year. And fortunately, they were amenable to that strategy, and I'm very appreciative that they were.
Thank you.
And that required a lot of trust and compromise on their part. So there was a lot of trust in that, in the one-year agreement, that next year we do go back and open it up to changing the compensation package and getting back into it again, like Peter said.
Is there any other discussion on the paraprofessional contract?
Is there any other discussion on the paraprofessional contracts?
I just want to thank the negotiating team for the time and effort put in and all the thought that goes into that.
It's very pleasant.
Yeah, it was a good experience.
I was not expecting it to be so pleasant. They were... They drive hard bargain, they're very tough.
Yep. They're great people.
Yeah, like, yes. The pairs do a lot in the schools, a lot.
All right, so I'll look for a motion to ratify the paraprofessional contract for one year. As proposed.
Motion to ratify the paraprofessional contract for one year.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained?
Should this be a roll-call vote because Mr. Terenzini needs to cast a vote?
Oh, yes, all right, yeah. We have to actually have, yeah, a roll-call vote. Dr. Burnham?
Mr. Terenzini?
Aye.
That was an aye.
Yes.
Mrs. Brzezinski?
Aye.
Mr. Beardmore?
Aye.
Mrs. Arshambo?
Aye.
Mr. Scullum-Breeney?
Aye.
And Mr. Leighton?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a discussion, CEP update.
Yeah, you might remember that Nadine Lorenzen came before you back in June, I believe, and gave you some information that we thought that Turkey Hill was gonna be eligible for this, and we would move forward. But in the end, Turkey Hill was, in fact, not yet eligible. So, we just wanted to provide that update, that it's status quo.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns?
Thank you for the update on that, I was wondering.
All right, next item on the agenda is reports. Can you just go down the line if you have any reports?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, nothing.
Several. The Athletic Advisory Committee met last night. We approved several fundraisers that I need to put into a memorandum to the superintendent, and I'll copy the members of the school committee. We also discussed going to a different meeting format. So, rather than a meeting every season where it's very difficult to figure out who are the right people to be there, what are the relevant sports, can we get them there on the right night? Oh, somebody's got... Field hockey had a pasta dinner last night and couldn't be there. That we were gonna do an annual live meeting that would include a student representative, faculty member, as outlined in the policy, and really be a reflection of needs and asks and wants from the athletics community, and that we believe that we need to go to a different system for approving fundraisers, which would effectively be mostly driven via email and left to myself or whoever the school committee representative is and the athletic director to approve and inform. That will require a policy change, which I will be bringing shortly as a proposal. The Capital Planning Committee met a few weeks ago to discuss our calendar and asks of department heads in terms of sort of compulsory requirements for the presentations that they bring forth. We met with... I met with Mr. Terenzini a couple of times over the last couple of weeks to discuss that, and we'll be bringing forth a schedule, a proposed schedule, literally within the next couple of days. And the town manager selection committee is due to meet next week to discuss proposals for a recruiting firm. We have a bid... We have bids are out, and I think are just due now, and we'll be looking at those and discussing them. The Finance Committee and Select Board approved a $15,000 transfer from the reserve account to fund the... To fund a selection or a recruiting firm to assist us in this process. So, now we're going through the acquisition process to get it going.
Thank you.
I have the middle school council is meeting on the 24th of September, and I already gave away some of my FinCom stuff, but on the 8th of August, Mr. Leighton met with the Finance Committee and talked about a possible change in health insurance for a suggestion to look into a HSA, HDHP. See, I've got all those initials in there. In other words, a high deductible health program. And they had a lot of questions, and they were interested. And then, on the 22nd, Mrs. Foyle met and spoke about this discussion, and she explained the necessary process to make that kind of change, which would be, it would go to the Health Insurance Committee that is in... That meets regularly anyways. They met on the 21st, as luck would have it, and she suggested that the proposal go to the Select Board. So, I assume that's what it's gonna happen to that.
Yeah, it's just waiting on the Select Board and the interim town manager, see if it proceeds.
They also had... I didn't watch the whole meeting on the 8th, but on the 22nd, they also had a huge discussion with the financial investment advisor regarding trying to get higher yields to investments, without getting technical. This was like a two-hour discussion, and my head was swimming. But he had things in three buckets, and certain funds can go to higher yields now because there's a new Mass General law that's allowing that. Some things cannot go to high yields at all because they're used for expenses and such. Some things can go to sort of high yields, which are on this list you have to pick from that the state allows, but there are certain things that can be moved to a higher yield, which would be like a 60% stock, a 40% bond. The town needs to vote this change in, and they are scheduled to hopefully do so at the special town meeting. Mr. Bernard was there explaining Chapter 90 funding. Currently, in his account, there's $2.4 million, but there is much work that is underway. So, after that work is underway, is paid off, there is $1.6 million available for future funding. Our sidewalk project that we had approved through APPA, but then we asked for the APPA funds back, and it went back and forth a million times, is coming out of his Chapter 90 funds, and it is twice as expensive as the quote he gave me. So, anyways, but that project is underway. The engineering is being done currently, and then, once the engineering is complete, that will go through. So, I was glad to hear that. And budget, I already talked about, so there you go, that's what I got.
Thank you.
I've talked about Budget Task Force throughout the whole thing. The last thing that we did was, we went through and looked at costs and expenses for the town after talking about things that generate revenue. Our next meeting, which is next Monday, will focus on gathering information about needs and wants from stakeholders in the town and in the school district, namely, the unions and for unrepresented, non-collective bargaining people, their officer, department managers talking about what they need in terms of funding and salary increases and things like that. The hope is that we're gonna, like, turn the corner and then start discussing proposals. And I will say that Ezekiel's been really, really good, staying on top of information. So, I think that the proposals are... You know, I keep a running list of the proposals. Some of them are like, you know, "Save $87", but others are like real, big-deal changes that could result in, you know, significant funds for the town. And one of them was the thing that Carol just mentioned about allowing the prudent investor rule to apply to town assets. And so, it's... I'm hopeful that there will be things that make the school district function better, and that there are some things that we can do to get more money. But I do ultimately think that, no matter what happens, we're gonna have some kind of proposal about taxes, which, you know, people love to hear that. I will remind everybody, Oliver Wendell Holmes, taxes are the price of civilization, but no one wants to hear that.
Thank you. I have none at this time. Next item on the agenda is public comment. I'll open it up to the public. Is there any public comment from the public? Seeing none, I'll open it up to a public comment from the committee. Seeing none. Next item on the agenda is topics for future discussion. Is there any additional topics you'd like to add?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to say something. I made a comment, I don't know, like, six months ago, about looking at the school's cell phone policy. I did not realize that everybody on the planet has an opinion about cell phone policy.
So, I would say you can always bring it to policy and bring it back to us, right?
It is coming, and I just wanted to prepare.
I'd like to talk about it.
If there's actually something that gets done at the school committee?
I imagine that there will be... This is the only thing anybody's ever reached out to me for, ever, not even the budget. So, like, I don't know why everybody's fired up about this, but I think that we'll... And it's obviously not ready yet, but I think that we should probably have a discussion item on an agenda later on down the line, literally dozens of people. Like, I don't even know...
More of a discussion?
Correct.
Guide policy?
Correct. I think there's... Because the problem is, there are strongly-held beliefs on both sides, and they're not resolvable.
And we could get Dr. Burnham to bring in some people to have that discussion with us.
Yes, that'd be great.
Thank you. Any other future topics for discussion? You can always reach out to me or Dr. Burnham, too. Next item on the agenda is executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Can I get a motion?
Motion to adjourn to executive session and then adjourn afterwards.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in...
Did you have public comment?
We did.
So, I think when I was in my car coming here, Mr. Scullum-Breeney was talking. As I run up the stairs, maybe I missed it? Is there any chance that public comment can be made?
If I can get a motion to reconsider.
I will draw my motion to adjourn.
Motion, thank you.
Motion to allow public comment.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public comment is now open.
Well, thank you, Anilakwood, 911 Main Street. You guys are so lucky I was driving home from work. And I literally pulled up front as Mr. Scullum-Breeney was giving his report. I checked the agenda, and it was like, perfect timing for public comment. But I started listening when you guys were finishing up the conversation about capital plan. I do... I like the order that you guys had, everything, including, in particular, that truck coming last. And I'll tell you why, and actually, I'm gonna try to actually tell you something that I think it's more doable. I was just at the hand for a couple of weeks ago around lunchtime, and there was a DPW truck parked there, just the kind of truck you guys want, with a little, you know, the built-in into the bed with the, I don't know, the utility boxes. But it had already some rust on the thing, and it has the plow adjustments. So, what I think would be a really good... I understand, you know, getting hand-me-downs and all, but when you're buying a brand-new truck, the truck is getting a lot more use for the life that it will have if you start using where it will get a lot of miles from. So, if we start a new trucks on the DPW, you know, we can even start talking about schedule, like, you know, trucks after so many years, they are up for grabs by the school. That will force the town to then give the DPW a new truck. But, you know, knowing that we have Chapter 90 funds of the tune of $1.6 million, you know, maybe this next round, we can suggest the DPW and capital plan to fund their loader and a new truck for them, and pass that truck down to the schools, because I think, you know, it's necessary. But more importantly, I think, well, just as important, we need to start talking about, you know, if the schools are expected to have hand-me-downs, when is the life cycle of that? And after so many years, you know, maybe that will become an automatic grab. By the way, that is done... The senior center, a few years back, did a grant for a bus or a minivan that... They did all the work, and when they went to get the grant, they were informed that MART gets that truck or that van. And after so many years, then the senior center can actually have rights to that. So, that is kind of a practice that does exist in public sector. So, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for making the exception.
Motion to adjourn, motion to enter executive session and then adjourn afterwards.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We'll go to executive session and adjourn following. Have a good night, everyone.